Stand for the place, please. Okay, any additions or corrections to the... Oh, it's all right. Yeah, right, January fifteenth. If not, we have a motion to accept.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. The motion to accept payment, the motion for payment of bills. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any amendments there? Severn Trent's criminal services contract, let us...
The Severn Trent had, of course, the board had voted in favor of accepting the contract with Severn Trent and for their participation in the Big L Pump Station influence project. And they sent a amendment for the board's consideration. However, there's an exhibit to this amendment that has a date line or a timeline that we don't believe could be met. Consequently, I discussed it with Penn Benner and I sent a request to Dana Cass, he's the Severn Trent's operations manager out of Fort Washington, Pennsylvania. And consequently, I'm recommending that the board postpone this decision until next meeting. That way I can get that date squared what. That's all it is. You just do it at the next meeting. And I just need to have that date changed. That's all.
So you're suggesting, or you're asking for it to be officially done by a motion?
No, you don't need a motion for that.
I just asked.
Wait to the next meeting. The next item I have, alcohol waivers. Alcohol waivers for downtown classic car show, which is being held on April 24th, May 22nd, June 26th, July 24th, and August 28th of 2014. Car show is at North Street and will be going north street from High to Main as it traditionally is, and also to Bo Street to...
Main Street.
To... And that's Fort Hough, Mainwell, okay. I would recommend that the board grant waiver to the Elton Alliance in order to continue the success of this particular endeavor.
Okay, do I have a motion?
We're all invited to people in it.
Do I have a motion to accept grant, grant the waiver of alcohol beverages restriction?
Yes, I move that we grant the Alliance request for alcohol waiver.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Next waiver is for St. Patrick's Day event. This event will be held at 113 North Street and 101 West Main Street. Downtown St. Patrick's Day event, March 14th and 15th, 2014. I recommend that the board grant a waiver to Elton Alliance for this activity, for these activities.
Okay. Do I have a motion to grant a waiver of alcohol beverages for downtown St. Patrick's Day event?
Some move.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Excuse me, myself. The last event is the spectacular Elton Fall Fest event. It will be celebrated on Friday, September 19th, 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. And on Saturday, September 20th, at 12:00 to 10:00, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I recommend that the Elton Alliance receive a waiver request, or alcohol waiver on this event also.
So do I have a motion to grant the waiver of alcohol beverages restriction for the Elton Fall Fest?
Some move.
I have a second.
Any discussion?
Yes, as we conclude approval on all three of these, the first one should have listed the dates and the second should have listed the event. So you can be current with the way you have it typed for the minutes. That make sense? No, it's not listed.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It needs to be listed. He did speak of it.
Right, I know. That's for the minute, so if somebody ever wondered, look back and reflect upon it. But I approve.
Do I have a motion and second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The last item I have is a resolution, exactly, Resolution R-2, 2014. This is for a supporting resolution to the Maryland Department of Housing and Economic Development's Neighborhood Business Work Program in order for Sandy Hill LLC to borrow money for the renovation, or continued renovation of the building at 101 West Main Street, formerly the Howard House. And obviously, the support is requested by PHCD in order for the town to promote its revitalization and expansion of local business within the downtown area. I would recommend that the board pass Resolution R-2-214 and will send this resolution to the Director of Business Landing Programs Division of the Neighborhood Revitalization Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 2R-2014?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I don't have any old business. Mary Jo, anything?
I have no business.
Or anything?
No, no business.
I have no.
No business.
My guess, as far as old business, I wanted to know if they were making any more progress on the golf course?
The one increment of progress was that the Maryland Department of the Environment issued a water permit, water appropriation use permit to Coba Fien, who is a subsidiary of T D Bank, who currently owns the property, hold site over the property. This is an interim period, it's one year, a probation permit. And if the owners that are looking into purchasing that property are successful in this month or next month, then they could utilize that permit to begin in the spring to do their engagement for the restoration of the golf course. That's the purpose of that permit. So that permanently, that's a very good sign.
Okay, great. There hasn't been any settlement or any person yet. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And another good new business I have is some appointments. Some reappointments for the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that would be Shirley Ann Hicks, Jared Rowley Bush, and Dawn Schwartz. So I get a motion to accept those reappointments.
Some move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have to exclude myself from part of it, but one happens to do my mother.
And then I have a reappointment for the Board of Supervisors of Elections, Karen Woffhaus, Paula Newton, Kingsley Schaefer, and Jill Vamus. Vamus, the reappointments. And a motion to accept the reappointments.
Some move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I have one new appointment, Sandy Burnett. I get motion to accept Sandy Burnett as a new appointment to the election board.
Some move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Another thing I have is that we got German Soffel here today at Congressman Andy Harris's office to let us know that they will have a host taxing filing season here on Saturday, February the eighth. The events are free and are open to the public. So they will be at the University of Maryland Easton Shore for one of the morning session and the one here in Elton Central France Library, the afternoon session, 2:30 to 4:30. So anyone who needs help with their taxes, they will be there to offer their help. That's the only I have. Mary Jo?
I have no new business this evening.
Yeah, I have one thing I want to discuss with the board. Last time around this year, last time around this time, we had talked and discussed about trying to change the election date because of Memorial Day and also the confusion that we had around the budget. And one of the things I'd like to propose to the board is that this year's elections is the fourth Tuesday in May, which is the 27th of May. And Memorial Day is right after. We have a lot of, I think the turnout was poor and I think people would be able to be a little bit more involved if we didn't run right into the election, the election and the holiday. So I'd like to propose to the board that if we could, like, if we got new members, we only had one week to discuss the budget with the new members, and I don't think it was fair at the time to bring new board members on if we do get board, new board members to discuss a budget and then have to agree on it. So I would like to make motion that we change election date if possible, if the code allows us to the second Tuesday in April, April the eighth. This will give the board seven weeks to review the budget and we can be able to discuss with the department heads before we vote instead of last minute, one week before voting on the budget. That's a real critical thing for us as far as the budget, especially bringing someone new in. I mean, I'm not sure whether it can happen, but I'd like to propose that to the board.
I believe that you can do it by charter amendment. I also believe that you can probably do a charter amendment by resolution, this particular section.
I brought this up, I believe, twice in meetings prior to this, maybe a few years ago.
April the eighth is the second Tuesday in April. That would give us at least seven weeks for us to review the budget. Six to seven.
You want to change the election date?
Yes, sir.
To what date?
To April the eighth. Election this year is May the 27th.
Yes. It's always the fourth Tuesday by charter.
And it's the day after Memorial Day. Most people you'll forget, but they don't get back in time to make, and I mean our numbers, I think, would probably change if we hadn't time enough to get the people out.
What date are you proposing to change it to?
April the eighth.
In prior meetings...
Because the charter has all kinds of rules about when you file and everything too. So all that would have to be changed, you know, the dates to file, submit to file for candidacy and everything, all those would have to be changed to comply because you have to...
I guess I have a little discussion about it. I mean, I think that the points are well taken. And Commissioner Jabonski, I know you did bring that point up before.
Couple of years ago.
But, I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if I appreciate my time being cut, even if it is a month for this election. So I would consider that we make this type of decision on like a non-election time.
I mean, what is that? I mean, as far as like, that could be any of the election time, I'm talking about the budget. That's what my concern about. I'm not, I'm not running for election. I mean, I'm saying to you that anybody, and next time it be someone else's turn to run, I'm just using it as a purpose for the budget, to give new elected officials and even us time to sit down and go over the budget instead of rushing ourselves for a week or two weeks to go over it.
Well, I guess what that point made about the budget, if it's just like another week or two, why don't we extend it instead of cutting it off?
You can't.
No, not the budget. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the actual, the point that he's making, move the election date.
My only question, whether it is, and I think it's a valid point, is do they need seven weeks or six weeks, whatever the date, would that date be closer to the actual election? Might be a couple of weeks or so.
Well, when I brought it up in the past, the whole reason was, was a brand new, three, well, in this situation, are the last three or two new board members can be on this board. They have one week to look at a budget and vote on it. If I were a new board member at that time, I would like to have more weeks to look at and discuss it with department heads. And that's not the case, the way we have our election. So this gives, what did you say, the eighth?
Eight, seven weeks.
Seven weeks.
Seven weeks prior to voting on the budget, where we sit down with department heads. So the new board that's in place, if there is a new board, would have time to look over the budget and be a part of the budget they're voting on. That was my reasoning in the past.
It gives us more time to look at it and get department heads together and talk, discuss it out like we normally do. Does kind of...
I can see the change in the date a couple of weeks, but I just don't know how effective, if you're new coming to the board, you really understand what's going on. I know when I first came on board, I only had one week. I didn't understand what was going on. I went with the status quo, but...
This would take more time, right? To learn what's going on.
So when you extend it, so the board that's been dealing with it all the time would be able to make an educated vote?
When extended, June the fourth is when we vote on the budget.
Right.
June the fourth. So when you say extended, that's good, that's time.
For the actual vote on the budget.
I can see the change, but I don't know...
I'm talking about the election. If the same board is in place, the same members are in place that have been dealing with the whole thing, the budget.
It's going to take, because nothing can't be done, it's going to take several resolutions because you've got a filing date and you've got other dates that you've got to consider when you're moving this. But state, I don't disagree with that. It probably would be a good thing for old ordinary candidates, this case may be. But I'm not sure April eight, that's pretty way up there. I don't know, you may have to have a resolution for each of these states you're going to do, the code, and pick out each state that's affected by this change and then have a resolution to change it. But that's possible. That's not improbable.
We can't, if he's got a motion, we can't vote on anything like that type without a resolution, is that it?
What we need, state would need to do is know when you want to have, if you have a consensus, because then we have to go through the entire, all the election part at least, and the budget part, to make sure that any change in the date would affect any other date requirements that were set forth in that charter and make a resolution for each one of those. Because in the law, any change to a charter has to be done by a resolution of the charter.
Which would be the filing date and the...
We'll be able to do it. It can't be, if we prepare a resolution and then make a decision, then we run out of time.
If you have a consensus of when you want to do it, then you have to look at it.
Again.
Announce it to the public and...
I suggest the April the eighth, and that was the date that I directed the board.
So you got a motion to do that?
Yes, I make a motion.
If you're going to change it to the eighth, that's what we need to do.
No, we have a motion to change it to the eighth. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do I have a second? Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Is this change, so we're changing it through three votes? Okay.
Wait a minute. Let me understand this now. There's an election in progress and we just voted on the actual date of that election.
You just set the, you have a...
No, I voted, I voted next.
You just made a motion to do it. The only way to do it is pass a resolution that changes that. What you're doing is voting that you want it for the eighth. Now, now that I know that, I will go through the charter, make all the appropriate changes, run it by council, then send it to the board, and then the board will vote on those resolutions. Once those resolutions are voted on and in effect, that'll happen. That's what, that will happen.
Okay, help me understand. When do we vote on the budgets?
We vote on the fourth, June the fourth.
I'm actually speaking to the town magistrate.
The mayor will present the budget. It has to be adopted, that'll be 32 days prior to the meeting. So that's at the end of May. Thirty-two days prior to the end of the fiscal, isn't it?
Right, and that which will be, like outside the meeting, the second, would be the third and the ninth.
When we vote on June the fourth? That's what he's asking, right?
No, I'm asking a very simple question, where I guess you guys already know the answer to. But when will we be voting on the budget?
We set the date yet?
Well, that's the 21st. We're looking at the 21st for the budget to be voted on, 21st of May.
That will be the last regularly scheduled meeting, prior to 32 days prior to getting into the fiscal year.
Now, the other question is, the other complication is that if you change the election to April, then you have to have an installation date. When would the mayor, if he were elected on the eighth, be installed? I'm against right now, if the election's in May, the first meeting in June is when you're installed. So if we have three people elected in April eighth, then we have to figure out when they be installed.
As long as we do, is take the dates we have now and subtract it and do the same thing with the new dates.
As long as it's consistent.
It's not that hard.
You all can see this, the original date was the 27th to have the election. Then you look back, then it's going to be the eighth. So we're going to go back a month?
Now, then...
It gives almost two months for someone to review the budget.
The 23rd then would be the second meeting after the election, that's when that would be sworn in. Then everybody would have one, two, three, actually four weeks before the budget was be approved, basically. That's what we're saying, I think.
It's usually the week after the election for swearing in.
This would definitely take some further discussion.
So basically, with the change, that means that who's ever coming in new is going to have a workshop on a budget, which it never had before. Because obviously, you're new and you don't understand it.
Right.
Again, this was discussed before, and I just brought it up, I ain't nothing accused anybody.
I'm not, I'm just trying to get the details of this. When, well, Barry, you've been around, you've never had a workshop before. You suggest that this time?
We've never had a workshop.
A workshop?
We always pretty much had the budget got under control when we got...
No, before, and I'm not knocking, I'm just trying to put the heads and tails together. Usually, when you make a budget, we sit down and we talk about whatever, whatever, whatever. All right, fine, we got this point. So what different, if you get elected back and if you run, that you're going to find, you're going to do differently in this eight-week period of time, a four-week period of time, that you want to do now that you didn't do before, to indoctrinate somebody and learning the budget? Is that two steps in order to change what I'm saying?
All right, if you're looking at, if the election's held the eighth, if I wouldn't, guys wouldn't get sworn into the 23rd, that's our next meeting. And then we'd only have a, if we had anything, we'd only have one workshop in May to finalize the budget. That would be it.
And my second concern, so if you go through the resolution for this particular time, and certainly the changes are inevitable, then that means you will be making a change the following year because on the following, well, two years later.
What you said, charter stays that way.
No, 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 no. You see how the charter is there? If you make a change here, then you're going to make a change to the charter, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, then two years later, the date might be of conflict, so there's possibility that you can change the charter again.
You can change the charter.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying to you. And you're just saying, no, 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 without hearing what I'm saying.
The reason is for the budget.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that. This is what I'm saying. What I'm saying right now, the charter you have, as far as voting, has been intact for how many years? And years don't make a difference. I'm just showing you the longevity that you have. All right, because of the date now, you're going to change it, if the date. It's fine, if that happens that way. But then again, I'm saying two years later, there's a possibility that change could occur again because of a date that may be conflicting or a date you might need for two other people that's coming in.
No, no, because the budget is always voted at the same time. So if the date is in April, then the budget would be at the end of May, you would still have that time period.
That's right, that would still be, give you the timeframe, that's right. That's what I understand.
Maybe my question's a little too heavy. All right, I'm fine. Still wasn't answered, but still.
Were you talking about the second Tuesday in April possibly conflicting with a future holiday, such as Easter holiday or something?
I guess I'm saying right now, if you have something in place now, you're going to change it. I'm saying what the possibility is, two years later, that there could also be a change again. Do you follow what I'm saying? That's my, that's my question, that's all I'm saying. And I'm saying change could possibly happen, and I don't doubt that, but I'm just saying that there could be changes.
One thing that you consider here, when the charter's changed, it won't be changed to a date like April eighth. It'll be changed to the second Tuesday in the month of April.
Right, but because of a date, that could be changed. One will precipitate the others, all I'm saying.
Okay, but if it's the second Tuesday, there is no holidays or anything that will ever occur during that period? At least there's a 20.
The reason it's not a holiday, it's to be here to review the budget with the budget thing, with the department heads. And that's what it was when I brought it up.
It also does, because Memorial Day's always after time in that weekend, too.
Well, it is, but that wasn't, it seemed to be the, you know, the big thing. But the fact is, if you're, now that we have all the workshops and go over the budget with the department heads, everybody is on the same page.
The resolution changing these dates and provisions in the charter, I'll prepare and present on the 19th of February. I think I can get it done by then, through the council from the GIL. So that's when you can expect to see, I'll get it out the edit on the look at. But that's when I'll present them, and then if you pass them then, then I'll kick, I hope they're ready for April eighth and all the final dates. Once it's passed, we'll put it out to the public.
You know, I say this in love, we should have talked about this at a workshop, you know, prior to this, I don't think, you know, the time here, because there's a lot of questions, but as I say in love before, it'd be what it is.
And again, you know, my comment is this, I mean, you just cut off time of an election period, you know, and you had, you had someone that's not, and again, I'm going to use your words, I'm saying this in love. You have someone that's bringing this point up and is not running. And you talk about, you talk about the budget, and you're saying that we're going to, we're going to give, allow for one, one meeting, I guess, an introductory or workshop type meeting, to introduce the budget to the incumbents, rather than the individuals or the board that has been dealing with the budget for the entire year to extend it and vote on.
Again, I brought this to the board's attention, and if you voted on it, you vote on it, if you didn't, you didn't. If you bring it up in a work session, it's since we bring it up now. I'm bringing it up now, and I ask for your input in it, and I can't think of a better time than to bring it up now, whether I'm running or whether I'm not running. It's about the budget, and that's the fact that I have, whether you change the date now, and it changes in the charter, the second Tuesday, we vote on the budget, if that's where it goes, that's what I'm asking. If not, then don't vote on it. That's all I'm asking. I didn't mean to make this so complicated, I just said, it's been brought up in the past about changing the election date and because of Memorial Day. And it's always seems that someone forgets, or we didn't give enough time to so-and-so, and I brought it up. And it's either we vote on it, we don't, and if you want to work that session, that's fine. I didn't bring it to one of those discussions. I didn't bring, bring it to one of those, uh, discussions where everybody was completely torn on it. I just brought it up because it's, it's a thought that came to mind. All right. Okay. Charlie, you got any, um, new business?
Hey, Mayor, I heard everybody's talking about it, but you, what are your thoughts on it? You know, you, you, you have a vote, whether it's yeah or nay. I mean, you sit up on the board with us. I mean, you got to add some conjecture to what was just discussed.
Well, it does make sense about the budget, and, um, we've always kind of pushed the budget to the end. When I get the budget, I try to do the best I can with it, and I get towards the end. We discuss it, um, all the way up until the end of almost April. And it doesn't give me much time to really finalize it, to get it back to you guys for approval. And it does give anybody more, a little bit more breathing room, I think, to, to work on this thing and make it a good budget. It does kind of make sense after you really think about it, especially I have to make the budget, and I have to do all the cutting, and back and forth with the department heads and Steve and you guys. It takes time. It does. It takes a lot of time. That's my take.
So what are we doing?
You know, you've already had it. I just had some clutch. If you ask me now, what am I doing? Allos, what about Craig Trossell's position? What, what's your stand on it now? We have not heard from you, or I have not heard, or they have not heard.
I sent a report out, and it, and it indicated in the report what I was going to do. I informed the board. I sent my weekly report out. In that report, under personnel, I put that I appointed, uh, Charles Bromwell, acting director, and that my intent was to promote him to that position, and then to fill the, his position with a senior inspector or inspector. I put that in my report.
There's a guy named Halsey. He has called numerous times. There is evidently a situation up on Maple Street. Uh, he's called recently. He did twice. So last year, I thought it was brought to your attention. Evidently someone parts a vehicle there. What is the status on that? I think he also asked other board members to give him a call.
Contact, he called me this morning. He called me this morning, and I talked to, um, Captain Donley, and it's been, one truck has been taken care of, and the other one's being taken care of, um, today. One truck has been moved, and being parked down in, um, another area, off, out of the area. Kai did, um, move it.
I, I called him as well. I was talking to him.
Allos, uh, some time ago, and I know you probably haven't got to it, but Earl had mentioned about the high water when you're going down Delaware Avenue. You know, you leave forty, you come all the way down, and after you have to make a, a turn. It's still possible to move two of those signs up so people will know even before they go down there?
At, uh, Whitehall and Delaware Avenue?
That's where it is now. I thought that Earl, did you talk once about moving it closer to forty?
Yeah, by the time people come down Delaware Avenue, they have to turn on Whitehall Road, um, because the road's closed, or either they're coming through town.
I'll send a thing to the state highway and ask them if they could post, uh, high water street road close signs at forty and Delaware Avenue in that vicinity, so warn people. So you have to put it along the highway, because when people come down and get in that right turn lane, that's when they have to see it. I'll, I'll put this thing out to Kenny Fender about it.
Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
I'm sure Alex, I, I see, but, hm?
That's it.
Is that's it? Okay. And that's, I'm sure I'll see if she's got anything else, and, um, we'll go from there. Okay, Mr. Liebman?
One oh-three, Walnut Lane. I'm going to start out with the second thing I was going to talk about, because you guys just been talking about is the budget. And, um, both things really tie to the budget. But I would be hopeful that this year, whenever the budget comes out, then it comes out earlier than it did last year, so that those of us in the public have a little more time to, to look at it and ask questions. And when I say that, I'm not talking a lot of time, but an extra couple of weeks would be very helpful to, to us to be able to come in and ask you guys questions and, uh, get into the budget a little bit. So that, the other thing on the budget that I'd like to suggest, uh, is that the town employees be asked for their ideas as how to reduce expenditures. As the budget's being formulated, it would seem to me that, um, department heads, uh, should get, get together with the employees in the department and talk to them about what ideas they might have. They would, they, maybe they have to have some knowledge of what's in the budget, but what ideas they would have to be able to reduce the expenditures or the costs associated, uh, with the operation of the city. And I think employee involvement, based on my experience, really pays off. And you will come up with ideas that you wouldn't have thought of yourself. So I'm making that suggestion, and it looks to me like you're going to be a little tight on, um, on time if you, if you change it to April. I'm not real warm on that idea, because I think it, there's not enough time for people to campaign and do other things. But that's not why I'm, I'm talking. I, I just think it's important to, uh, we, we've tried to put an emphasis on, uh, reducing expenditures and bringing costs in the best way we can. And I think this is, uh, could be an effective way to do it, and that's in every department. Whatever it is in, in this, there's a lot of people with the town, and there's probably a lot of ideas that would come up, because as they say, the person that does the job knows the job the best, and they may have some ideas. So that's my comment on the, the budget. The other thing I wanted to talk about...
Mr. Liebman, you can move that mic towards you, buddy, because you're comfortable. Bend it down, take it. Bend it down.
Oh, you actually want to hear me? Okay. All right. Uh, the other thing I'm, I'm interested in, which has come up before you, is the, um, uh, the, the storage contract that the, uh, that the county, uh, is interested in. And I know the planning commission has made their report and so forth and so on. But I think this storage contract has the possibility to increase, uh, uh, revenue, so maybe substantially to the town, and, uh, that, the way I look at it, would help the town to balance the budget. And so I, that's, from my vantage point, I think that's very important.
Well, you're talking about the capacity.
Yeah, the, the, uh...
Their proposed capacity.
The county wants to buy a storage capacity from you. And I understand the planning commission said that, you know, uh, that there's plans for everything, but I, I think most of, most of the things, most of the, uh, issues there, um, may not happen, or they'll happen sometime down the road. So when you start now, even if, even if they all happened, uh, over the next five or six years, there's a delta there between now and when things start. So there's a lot, in my opinion, there's a lot of open area to, uh, to set this up. But, uh, what I'm asking is that, uh, that the town run, uh, a calculation on the projected revenues, uh, from such a venture, and offset that with projected costs, whatever they may be. And, um, I, that, that would be, uh, I think, an important report to present to you, to you, uh, and your analysis of, um, of this project. And, uh, the, uh, and the, the, uh, one other comment is that the county needs this storage more than you need the county. So I'm suggesting that, uh, if, if it goes this far, that you negotiate from a period, point of strength, because you are in a, uh, position to really get what you think is what you want and is fair. And, um, based on what I know, I think this, uh, this would actually, uh, this, not in fiscal year fifteen, but if this were to come about in fiscal year sixteen, the revenue over, uh, costs would actually, uh, uh, help to balance your budget. It may in fact balance your budget. I, it depends on what, how the numbers come out. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, I'm, I, I find this a very, uh, I'm very enthused over this thing with the, uh, with the county. I, I think it presents an opportunity. And, uh, once you get the facts.
I may be wrong, Mr. Liebman, but, and you can answer this for me better than... The sewer, any funds going in would have to be used for sewer, not to help balance the budget. Am I correct? Because it just can't, it would be used just for the sewer. So it can't really balance the budget. It just helps the sewer fund. I mean, whatever goes in has to be used for the sewer.
But if we're running it, if we're running it, can we?
I just need to, I, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
That would be sewer revenue, and there hasn't been any revenue numbers discussed yet. They haven't proposed any fee. And we haven't looked at all the expenses about that, too, so we don't know what it would be. But keep in mind, it potentially could be a short-term benefit to the sewer fund at the expense of a long-term benefit of the general fund. Should there not be development that would bring a general fund revenue? Because there wouldn't be any sewer capacity for any, uh, development in the pipeline right now, because we have to hold off, because the county would be using that portion of what is currently unused capacity.
Okay. And obviously, you all know a lot more about it than I do. I'm just suggesting, as you take a business-like look at it and see where the numbers are, and also, uh, realize this is the government, but be flexible as far as the flow of funds. You certainly should be able to work it out. If it comes in one bucket, it could go into another one.
You, you could potentially adopt a budget where you have the sewer fund providing revenue to the general fund.
Yeah.
You'd have to operate a transition from sewer funding to the revenue fund.
I'd say that's, certainly that approach could be looked at.
There, there's been no proposed fees discussed, though.
Well, I understand that. And, uh, I, I understand that this is, uh, just getting started, but I'm... Personally, I'm enthused about the opportunity, and I'm suggesting that you take a serious look at it with numbers.
Amen.
You were on this last time, Mr. Henderson.
Let's discuss it. Let's keep the discussion going.
Thank you all for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lindgren?
Could I take a statement, because in light of Mr. Liebman's enthusiasm, uh, we'll probably, uh, want to have a meeting, uh, with our engineers to discuss this at the February twelfth workshop, because as Commissioner Hicks had suggested, to collect data, if the data collection's done, they've removed the meters, and the final, uh, flow data has been submitted to KCI for analysis. So by February twelfth, we should have it done, and then it'll be decision time.
Okay.
So we'll, uh, schedule a meeting for February twelfth workshop, uh, for that discussion.
Okay.
Bob Litzberg, one oh-five, Walnut Lane. Speaking of the budget, I think that the public should have access to the budget prior to three or six days prior to the night that you have your public hearing. We're allowed to get that on a Friday afternoon, and you voted on it on Wednesday. Also, I think that anybody that has any questions on the budget should have more than six minutes to ask questions. You ask one question, you might have questions on four or five pages. You get one question, and sometimes it takes more than three minutes for, for Steve to answer the question. He answers the questions, but sometimes we only get one shot at anything. I think that we should have more time and be able to go from, from page one through sixty or whatever's there. Now, correct me if I'm wrong on this. Two weeks ago, I think you stated that you'd been in touch with the state senator and air delegate to receive, try to receive two million dollars in funds for the, the state train station. Am I correct? Didn't you submit that statement? What did you say about the train station?
There was, I was in touch with the senator.
Right.
Who was trying to get money for us for the train station.
Okay. My question is, who owns the train station?
That'd be, uh, Amtrak and Mark, really. Mark would, Mark would run it.
Why would the town be spending money on something that we don't own? Why would the town be trying to get two million dollars from the town, from the state of Maryland as a grant to refurbish a train station that the federal government owns?
We're getting, trying to get money, not only from the state, but as I, uh, with the, uh, well, MAPCO, that federal money that they have for planning and stuff like that, they have the money for that from the feds. That's, they get money from the transportation plan, that they, they get all this money, and it's all for planning and design. And what we're trying to do is get a train station open here in Elkton, and they would get the money from the feds, and we probably would have to have a matching grant to get the money, uh, and the state would, could, if they could, uh, match that grant.
Well, why would they be giving it to the town of Elkton instead of Wimpeau?
They're not, we're not getting any money at all. It's going to be going through the state.
And you said that you're trying to get, I understood, the way I understood it, the town of Elkton's trying to get the two million dollars from the, from the delegate and senator.
So they help us get the money with this, with the feds, because the feds got a grant. It's called a Taggart Six Grant. And they come out with that, that'll be so many years, and there's money in that federal grant for planning and engineering and construction of a project, if someone wants to apply for it. And thus, when we apply for it, uh, we wouldn't even apply for it. If I go through the Wimco council, they would apply for it, and then there would be a matching grant, of which someone would have to match that grant, match, matching funds. And it would have to come from the state, not from the town.
From the state, and they would be giving the two million dollars to the federal government to, to rebuild that train station. Is that what you're saying?
Right, that would come, nothing from Elkton at all.
Nothing from Elkton at all. Okay, well, I misunderstood what you said, because you said we were trying to get the grain. Am I, am I wrong again on the situation with Newark? Aren't they supposed to get a train station also, where the old Chrysler plant is?
Well, they've already got, they've got their money for it already.
They've got their money for it?
Yep.
And do you honestly think that six miles from here, that, that, that Wimpeau or whoever it may be is going to have a spur line coming down here to stop at Elkton? And they're six miles away. And Newark, which has plenty of parking, has everything?
A lot of our people...
I mean, that's just my, I'm just asking you what you think your opinion is.
A lot of our people are going to Newark, and a lot of them are going down to Perryville for the, catch the train.
Exactly.
And that's part of the revitalization of, of Elkton, with having a train station here.
All right. I just don't, I can't see where, where the state of Maryland should be getting involved with, with that thing, spending taxpayers' dollars. Porter Ford again. You get six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents for Porter Ford. Now, before I was told, which I understand, that Bay Shore is a trucking outfit, that they sell big parts for trucks. I understand that. Has anybody, before you, I asked the question, has anybody in these department heads gone to any of these other places and checked prices? My question is, why, I would certainly think that when you're spending close to seven hundred dollars for, for, just for Porter Ford and Newark, that that seven hundred dollars would be better spent here in Elkton for somebody that's paying town taxes. I mean, does that make sense, if it's even a little bit more?
I think the public works department, um, who was that? That's Steve, the one?
Yeah, Steve.
They told me they've shopped around before. They have gotten better service and pricing from Newark.
Well, it hadn't been too long ago. I checked with the service manager, the parts manager, out to Ramsey Ford, and they've never been, didn't know anybody that's called them from the town. I mean, it's, it seems like there's more business going out of town from this town than what they're spending in the town. There's some things I understand you can't buy here in town. But I certainly think that anything that can be bought here in town, within reason, should be bought here, even if it's a few cents or maybe a couple of dollars more.
Okay, there is nothing else, you got anything? We'll call for a closed session, talk by personnel. Okay. Another motion for a closed meeting?
Yes, I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, we will not be reconvened.